Time is 7:02. I will call a common council meeting to order. Could we have roll call, please?
Denkert.
Here.
Gallops, Gottske.
Here.
Iverson.
Here.
Bremer.
Here.
Schotzinger.
Here.
Sorensen.
Here.
Split.
Here.
We have a quorum.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We take a moment to pray. A reading from chapter six of Galatians. Let us not grow weary in doing what is right, for we will reap at harvest time if we do not give up. So then, whenever we have an opportunity, let us work for the good of all. And we pray. Almighty, gracious, and eternal God, be present with us, guide the leaders of our city and those in private sector to do what is good for all. Especially, we pray for those who are either near or far away, especially in Jamaica, where the hurricane is headed. Be present and protect all who are in peril because of inclement weather. We pray in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
All right, just a reminder for everyone to speak directly into their microphones tonight. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda, Mayor.
I'll second it.
A motion by Doug, seconded by Jolene. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving tonight's agenda, say aye.
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 Opposed? That is approved. No one has signed up for public comment, so we'll move right into our public hearing. This is for the community block, or development block grant, Public Facilities Project, for street and utility improvements on Hamburg and Henny Street. We will open the public hearing at 7:04, and we'll start with an update on the status of the project. Adam, would you like to start that, or is that going to be Ben?
Uh, we can go to Ben.
All right. Ben, you can go ahead.
Perfect. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, let me bring up your volume a little bit.
All right, I'll try to turn up. Get a little bit closer here. Well, yeah, thank you so much. So my name is Ben Andrews. I'm at MSA Professional Services, the contracted grant administrator for the City of Ripon's CDBGPF Award. I'm here tonight to facilitate the public hearing, which is a requirement of the Community Development Block Grant. Just wanted to make a note about the agenda. The agenda specifically is outlined by the funding agency, so there's a few things in the agenda that may not be applicable to the project, but nonetheless, we still need to cover those items. And then just lastly, just wanted to make note that I'll be covering some updates for the project and that there'll be an opportunity for any members of the public to provide any input near the end of the public hearing. So with that, I will jump into the first section here, which is the updates on the status of the Community Development Block Grant, including an overview of project activities completed to date and activities remaining to be completed. So the City of Ripon was awarded a Community Development Block Grant, Public Facilities Award, on July 2024. The award was a total of $1 million for street and utility improvement projects along Hamburg and Henny Streets. Perfect, okay. You have everything for the presentation there. To date, the city has completed multiple activities related to the project. That includes executing the grant agreement with the state of Wisconsin so that you can receive the dollars. Procurement has occurred for professional services, for engineering, and for grant administration. We've also moved forward with moving, with procuring the prime construction contractor for the project and awarding a contract. We've also completed semi-annual reports throughout the duration of the project. We began construction activities for the spring of 2025. It was required to be completed by July 1st of 2025. We've also completed various fair housing actions that are associated with the grant, and currently, we're conducting the citizen participation public hearings. Next slide, please. So there are a few activities about the finances here. So there are a few activities that remain to be completed. So the construction activities to date, from Crew Check Construction, they basically completed the majority of the project work, but we're still looking forward to essentially closing out this project with the last few pay applications. The prime construction contractor has requested $1,200,000 for the work on the project, and the remaining balance for the prime construction contractor to request is $500,000. On the CDBG side of things, the city has requested $636, excuse me, $639,000 of CDBG funds, and it has the remaining of $539,000 remaining to be requested. So if you look there on that diagram, you can see what has been requested within blue, and then the remaining portion within orange is what needs to be requested for the remainder of the project. So it's anticipated, this project is anticipated to be completed prior to October 31st, 2026, but according to the grant guidelines, everything needs to be completed for construction activities prior to that deadline. And then the project would also need to be closed out. Everything submitted to the funding agency by December 31st, 2026. So this is one of the items I was referring to earlier about some of the things that may not apply to this project. Some CDBG projects involve acquisition and relocation, whether or not it's for residential or for commercial purposes. Just wanted to outline specifically for this project that this street and utility improvement project would not require any acquisition, relocation, or displacement of any businesses or residences. Next slide, please. Same thing for this upcoming project, this upcoming agenda item, is that the housing needs in the community, some projects focus more on housing development. This project, for a street and utility improvement project, would not focus on housing and would not be considered applicable. Next slide, please. So this is the opportunity, now that we've covered portions of, you know, what has been conducted for the grant, what has been conducted for the CDBG activities, now would be the opportunity, if any members of the public wanted to come forward and comment on any of the activities or project. Just wanted to make note that if you do choose to step forward and provide any of those comments, that if you could please provide your name on the signup sheet, and then prior to actually speaking, if you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record. So if any members of the public choose to do, choose to come forward with public comment, now would be the opportunity to do so.
Would anyone in the room like to speak on this matter? We have no one wanting to speak.
All right. So just open it up here for standard public hearing. Just two more times here, if anyone wants to come forward, now would be the opportunity. And then just a last call here, if any members of the public would like to come forward. All right, hearing none. We can close that section of the public hearing, and then we're going to move on to the last section here, which are other topics as applicable. MSA has not identified any additional topics to cover during the public hearing, but it is an opportunity for any members of the city council or any public officials that would like to share any comments or feedback about the project. This would be the last opportunity to do so as well for those folks. And it is completely optional.
Any members of the council have any questions or comments? They're all shaking their heads. No.
All right. Well, thank you so much again for the opportunity to talk a little bit more about the project. Again, my name is Ben Andrews, grant administrator at MSA. If you do have any questions, feel free to contact me. Otherwise, thanks again for the opportunity, and I would forward it over to the chairperson if you would like to conclude this public hearing.
All right, the time is now 7:12. I will close the public hearing for the Hamburg-Henny project. And there is no action to be taken on this project tonight. All right. All right. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
All right, next item is pay application number one for Selfridge Park. This is in the amount of $61,175.44. Ellen.
I move that we pay application one for Selfridge Park in the amount of $61,175.44.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Ellen, and a second by Doug. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving pay application number one for Selfridge Park in the amount of $61,175.44, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. All right, next item is an outdoor open container entertainment event permit application. This is by Ripon Main Street, and for a holiday wine walk on November 7th in the 100, 200, and 300 blocks of Watson Street. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Jonathan, seconded by Mark. Any discussions or questions? Craig is here. If you want to direct any questions to Craig.
Craig, how many wine walks is this? What number?
Probably two a year, 10, 12, something like that.
Okay.
And this one is sold out, so.
And sold out means how many again?
600.
Great.
And we just had a quick analysis. They're from all over Wisconsin, and also from Iowa, Illinois, Missouri. So it's, and our biggest market right now is Fond du Lac, followed by Milwaukee and Chicago. So it's, the event is really changing.
Do you see any, does it give you enough information to know where the furthest travel that someone came?
I didn't go through all of them, but there's one on the map that's, I don't know if it's Florida, someplace like that.
Pretty far down south.
But then, that could be somebody who's maybe a summer resident, too. So it doesn't go that far.
Sure. Just curious. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
If there is no further discussion, all those in favor of approving the outdoor open container entertainment event permit application for Ripon Main Street on November 7th, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. All right, next item is a professional services agreement. Plan Examination Service for E-Plan Exam. Adam, do you want to start with an overview on this?
Yes. Also, DA Maddox from E-Plan Exam is on the line, correct? DA, are you there?
Yes, I am. Well, good evening.
So in your packet, you should have a staff report, and basically, through our partnership with MSA, providing building inspection services, they work with E-Plan Exam to offer a service that deals with state approvals or the work that is done for commercial and industrial review at a state level. So you can see here that we currently rely on the state to do that work. There's generally a review process, and that takes 60 to 90 days. It can be a pretty long wait time, and 100% of the costs go to the state. E-Plan Exam is, DA can kind of discuss his experience, but they've been around now for a few years, I believe, and they provide review services for the city, and we essentially become a fully delegated organization, meaning we are able to do all of the reviews through E-Plan Exam's services. The benefit there is they have a 15-day turnaround, as long as the person or the applicant puts together a comprehensive plan that isn't a problem, right? And essentially, review it, get it back in 15 days, and then there is a cost to that in the fee structure, but the fee structure shares a 90-10 split. There always remains the option for the applicant to go to the state if they choose not to, but this is an option to offer, really at no cost to the city, to speed up the process to get a project moved forward more quickly. There are other communities that work with them, including a few listed here in the area, and you can see the key features and benefits and overall kind of project, or, sorry, contract language. The contract has been reviewed by the city attorney and submitted back to E-Plan Exam and is acceptable from administration's purview or perspective. And DA certainly can kind of answer any questions. Does this give kind of a overview of what E-Plan Exam is?
Absolutely. Good evening. Hopefully, you can all hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Well, help expand a little bit about Adam. What he brought up is we were founded on April 1st, 2019, and the simple aspect is we work in partnership with communities that we serve, as well as the state of Wisconsin, to provide uniform code enforcement for all plan review and commercial development throughout the state of Wisconsin. Back when we first started, most communities never knew this was even an option. So you'd have developers quietly waiting 90 days, most times actually longer than that, based on open records we've uncovered, to just simply get permission to start building a commercial building. And then you have the various trades, plumbing, HVAC, fire line, fire suppression. We guarantee 15 days for any project we receive. That's approval, hold, denied, ask additional information. We make sure that, it's essentially like a chess clock. We hit the button, get everything back on over to them as quickly and efficiently as possible, and give news on over to them that can help speed up their redesign, reevaluation of any sort of building as we're going through. Now, a couple additional things. Since we started, we now serve around 1.3 million population within the state of Wisconsin. We are a Wisconsin owned and operated company with 25 employees all throughout the state of Wisconsin. We've worked in everything from data centers to lumberyards, shipbuilding facilities, not that I imagine a lot of those would be in the city of Ripon, to our first encounter with MSA in the wonderful world of Lake Dalton and Wisconsin Dells, where God knows what people want to try and build there. But honestly, it's one of those things where this program, when we set it up, is a net revenue generator for the communities we serve. We reintroduce revenue where you've never seen it before. The state has collected all this funds, so we provide a check back to the communities we serve at the end of each month. And in return as well, we try to make sure from the development side, their projects move a lot faster. They have access to us. Anyone seeking to develop in the communities we serve have access to us for free code consultations for anything. And we strongly encourage that, especially as people start looking at rehabbing facilities and things of that nature. With that, if there's any other questions, be more than happy to fill them.
I just have one question. On your exhibit B, the fee chart.
Yes.
Is that the total fee to the contractor, or is that in addition to what the state charges?
That's the total fee to the contractor for the trades that they select to submit on. So whether it be building, HVAC, plumbing, fire line, fire suppression, that would be the fee schedule, what they would pay for us. Unfortunately, we are going to be a little bit higher than the state, but what we found in open records is the developers themselves are willing to pay a little bit of a premium for that quicker turnaround time. So it is a little bit of a marginal increase from what the state has. Unfortunately, their fee schedules have not been updated since 2001 and 2005, and I think we all can name a few world events that have happened since that period of time. So unfortunately, inflation has simply taken its toll at this point. So for this to be viable, we are a little bit more than the state. But even with that, we're talking about hundreds of potential plan reviews in other communities. Last year, we did 34% of the state's workload. I think we only missed out on maybe a couple hundred of 3,400 plan reviews. So even with higher fee schedules, even marginally, it really hasn't impacted the developer's perception.
But just confirming that, this would be the, the contractor would get one bill, and you pay the state for whatever is required?
Oh, yes. In terms of what is required for the state of Wisconsin, yes, we do compensate per their fee schedule in SPS 302. And with regards to one bill is a little bit of a caveat to that. So if a building plan comes in, we're going to charge that one project for that one building scope. HVAC, plumbing, fire line, fire suppression, those can all come in as separate submissions, and when those come in, that's when we'll assess the fee for those specific items. To ensure that we have transparency, Adam and his entire team will be able to have access to our systems so they can see every step along the way what's happening.
Okay, but not a separate bill from the state?
No, not a separate bill from the state, no. If it goes to the state, it doesn't have to come to us. If it comes to us, it does not have to go to the state.
Oh, got it. Understood. Mark?
Yeah, this is maybe a question that Adam would have more insight into, but about how many projects this past year would have been expedited or had a little bit of a quicker turnaround if we had this in place previously?
A handful. It's not like we're doing a ton of commercial projects, but I think the, the added benefit is that kind of consultant review. I mean, you have buildings in downtown with small business owners or smaller properties. You have large projects, right, where, you know, maybe somebody doesn't need that technical assistance right up front, because everybody sort of just thinks, well, it's pretty easy to do something until you realize that it's not. And then you need to hire professionals to help you through that process. So we've seen more challenges in that regard, that this service can help streamline it. And frankly, you know, time is money with development. The longer someone has to wait to get the plan approved at a state level, it's dollars not going into the project. So I would say a dozen or so every year, maybe more, depends on the year. There are ones we never see, right? There are things that happen that we never see until we get an approval letter to Naomi, and that's, that's not great either, right, under, under the state. We don't get notified until the very end. So projects like Signature Way for doing a $35 million, you know, project, in addition, the city had no idea until, right, the very end of the project, and they'd submitted it to the state already. So there's a, there's a, yeah.
Adam, if it helps, I got open records up right here. You had 24 projects go to the state last year, 24 individual commercial development projects. And in the years previously, it looks like it was a little bit more. But those are each separate projects that each carry a timeline delay of, looks like the average was probably between 60 to 90 days. So that's the timeline for people being able to open up their first business, getting their shops lined up, getting tax revenue from that completed building project. And that's everything from plumbing remodels, grease interceptors, new commercial development, the whole nine yards.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
John?
So the contractor would still have a choice of submitting to the state or this company, plus also, there's no cost to the city, period?
There's no cost.
There's no retainage fee, there's nothing.
Nothing. There's no retain, it's all fee-based, and we actually collect on 10% of the revenue for any project that goes forward.
Okay, through that.
So it sounds like a win-win. I mean, there's no, it doesn't sound like there's risk the city is taking on.
It makes us more efficient, and it opens up a little bit of revenue stream, and, you know, is a, is a way to sell development as well as do it a little bit differently, because going to the state, frankly, is, I think, a little intimidating. And we've seen delays at a state level exceed that 90 days. So being able to do it in 15, certainly. We have peer communities who are doing the same thing for the same reason. So that's why we do it, but it seems to be working.
So with that being said, I move to approve the professional service agreement as presented to work with E-Plan Exam 1. Is that correct?
Yep, E-Plan, yep. I'll second.
Just E-Plan Exam.
Yep.
We have a motion by Jolene, seconded by John. Further discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the professional services agreement for E-Plan Exam, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Thank you.
Thank you, DA. Thank you, DA.
All right. Next item is SCADA system upgrade presentation and notice of award.
I'm Scott Chilson. I'm principal project manager and engineer at MSA. I've been working with staff on evaluating your SCADA system. Staff asked me to come and present to you guys, talk a little SCADA with you. Not everybody knows what SCADA is, so I'll try to do what I can not just read the slides to you guys, but if you guys do have questions, it might go with a topic like this, go ahead and interrupt. Like, let's have a discussion here. So the city has 15 facilities, give or take, it depends on how you count them and when you count them, but about 15 facilities throughout the community that are all connected, and they basically provide your water, your potable water and your sewer to all your businesses, your industries, institutions. I mean, everything we take a little bit for granted, SCADA is kind of back there helping make those mechanical processes work. So SCADA is not necessarily one thing. Some people think it's software, other people might think it's hardware. What's the difference? Well, that's where SCADA kind of, it combines components, computers, people, and really automates and makes your system operate efficiently and resilient. SCADA is going to do some things like monitoring, alarming, and it's also going to do some recording and reporting, which helps you guys stay in compliance with regulatory agencies, things like that. You really want to just boil it down, SCADA helps your utilities make sure that water comes out of the faucet when you turn it on and the water stays down the drain, you know, when the faucet is on. So from kind of like global standpoint, kind of driving home that you have a bunch of facilities, it's not just in one building, it's not one factory that makes all your water or all your wastewater. It depends on all these facilities that are distributed around your community. So you have five lift stations, you have four to five operating wells and water treatment plants, and two elevated storage tanks, a wastewater treatment plant, and then obviously your DPW building. From another scheme, trying to just kind of drive home what's going on with your utility system, you start out with the groundwater, it goes into your distribution system, basically making it to your users around the community, goes down the drain, and kind of comes back, kind of showing that flow. What does that have to do with SCADA? SCADA is kind of that invisible backbone, so that's why I don't really have it on there. It was kind of my punchline. SCADA is the invisible backbone that basically holds this system together and interconnects it. And so you have the flow of water and sewer, but to do that, you have the invisible backbone of SCADA. So hopefully that, trying to get a visual there that it, part of the reason people have questions about SCADA is because it is invisible. If it's doing its job, it's invisible. So trying to find another lens to kind of describe what SCADA is, back in the 50s, and that's not that long ago, basically everybody turned things on and off by hand. There is somebody who actually lived at the well or the water plant and turned it on and off. After the 50s, we started to see mechanization, started to use timers and things like that to turn things on and off. As we moved on to more automation, more automatic, more sophisticated, so now we're all the way into a distributed network. So it not only turns things on and off, it does some thinking, it tattles on itself. When it's not working correctly, it calls the operators. I think that's one really important thing. This isn't AI. It really does depend on your operators. I mean, you need your operators. This is a tool that helps them do their jobs and do it most efficiently and make sure that you guys aren't talking about SCADA or aren't talking about utilities working or failing because it's working, you know, quietly and invisibly in the background. It gave you some comparables at the bottom. It's kind of like, when you think about this, you know, way back when, if you wanted to hear music, you had to go to a concert. And then they, you know, the next step was, you know, a record player, and then, you know, as it went on and on and on, and that's how you feel like SCADA has evolved. It's still evolving. So we all watch TV and all these things, and we walk around with these phones and all that stuff. SCADA is trying to keep up with that technology. So what's tomorrow for SCADA? We're not sure, but we know that there's an evolution here, and we're going from somebody having to turn it on and off to more automation and more automatic, so. Why is it important? Kind of hit a little bit on this already, but I think control, you know, asset management, keeping up with your regulatory records, safety, troubleshooting, enunciation of alarms, expediting efficient response times to things that fail. And then you have the, you know, the why, I mean, safety, health and safety, and then, you know, you're supporting your community. Everybody needs these utilities to operate. You think about how you use water and sewer, and it's just there. You just take it a little bit for granted, but when you think about it, it's a pretty special thing we have. And then security, I think, things to think about when we talk about this topic tonight is as we become more automated, more diversified, more integrated, security is not just the guy at the door anymore. They get in other ways. So if you don't keep up with your technology, you are, you're taking a chance on your security. So kind of, we can unpack that more if you need to. This slide, there's a lot going on, a lot of words, but I think one of the most important takeaways that I was trying to convey is why now? I think the key word is legacy. In the industry of controls and equipment, legacy, when somebody says something's legacy, it's your 1984 Pinto, you know, it's old, okay? So you can't, they don't support it anymore. Those are the things you're going to hear.
Can I ask a question? As I read this, when you're talking about parts for legacy system are no longer available, what you're really saying is that in order to get those, they're being cannibalized from other systems and bought on eBay.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's not good.
There's, and keep in mind, you're not alone, and there, you know, people, and that goes, that goes to the investment you guys made a long time ago that it's lasted this long to the point where, hey, they're not even manufacturing new parts anymore. They're.
So you've got to cannibalize other people selling it off.
Yep. And you know how that is? Can you find the one part you want, and can you bid higher than the other guy that needs it? So.
Well, and it's not, none of it is under warranty. There's no warranty for buying those.
Warranty's been gone for about 20 years.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, I hit that, that's, you know, legacy, security. Your system is very, very, very close to the end of its useful service life. I think there's some examples where you've heard about it, and when you hear about it, it's pretty concerning. So I'm not here to have the Debbie Downer discussion about what could happen or what has happened, but just be aware that, you know, just like your 1984 Pinto, when the alternator goes, you got to go to the junkyard to find parts for it. That's probably not your first plan, so. Next couple of slides here, kind of want to really give you guys an idea. We didn't, we didn't jump into this without some planning. So we've been, I've been working with staff since 2024. I know that there was discussion previous to my getting involved. As we worked through that, we came up with a design. We went through a bidding process, a selection process, an evaluation process. With SCADA, it kind of becomes partnership with that contractor. You're not building a box and then you're taking it away, that box, because it's a living device, you kind of create a relationship. So the way, we did kind of a hybrid bid evaluation, and that really kind of comes through because right now, we're at this point where staff and I have, we bid it, we interviewed the bidders, you had two bidders, and have made a selection. We think that you have a good relationship with this system integrator, PJ Cortens. They've been working for the village for many years, so they have certain institutional knowledge, and that, I think that reflected in their bid price because they kind of knew what they were getting into, and they know your system, so.
You mean the city?
The city, yes, yes. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay.
Where do we go from here? Well, tonight, we're talking about contracting. We have to physically say, do we want to hire someone? Do we want to move forwards with this project? And if we do that, the next step would to be value engineering. We want to make sure that we sit down with this contractor as a group and make sure that we aren't just building something and then when we get to the end say, well, I wish somebody would have brought that up. So being that this is a hybrid type of thing, and it's a little bit invisible, there's some room there for some discussion that you might not really have if you were building brick and mortar home or something like that. After the value engineering, we document exactly what we're going to build, go through shop drawings, submit to DNR for approval. This is a reviewable project because it really impacts the quality and the quantity of your water and your wastewater. So both departments of DNR will have to weigh in and approve the upgrades. And then go into construction, and the contract that we're putting in front of you tonight, PJ Cortens is committed to having it done by essentially summer of 2027, hopefully before then. So this last slide, kind of bring three players together. You're really looking for a secure network. We got to make sure that all those, all those sites, those 15 sites talk, they're communicating. You're going to have a new and more current SCADA system software that's going to give you all those things that we talked about, and be able to actually order parts instead of going eBay. And then construct by the spring of 2027, and it really creates a foundational system to current standards. If you think about the system you're building on or you have right now, it's old. It has nowhere to grow to. So you would be building a system that you can build on instead of, it's not a one and done thing. It's going to evolve. The new system will evolve.
Doug?
So will this system position the city to grow its water system if we have a subdivision going in there? Is that going to help us with that Harvins, duplexes, condos, single-family homes? Is that going to help us grow, make sure they have good water over there?
Loaded question.
Yes.
SCADA helps the whole community have water, not just water for building, but we've got the base, we've got to provide that water for the base. But yes, it absolutely would allow us to continue to make enough water or more water to serve those places, as well as treating the wastewater coming from those places. But then to take that one step further, let's just say you are going to do an expansion like that, and you need another well. This SCADA system is going to readily accept and be able to be expanded to not only bring on that new well and treatment plant, but also add lift stations or other devices, things that you might need, infrastructure that would help support that growth.
Okay, thank you.
John?
For this million dollars plus, we're getting pumps, valves, just technical software we're getting, what are we, what are we actually getting?
So I guess this is kind of the, you know, the hard and kind of the heart of the issue, right, about our infrastructure and the lack of investment in it over the last 20 years in this community. This is, like he said, the backbone that operates. It's technical, you know, stuff. It's computers, it is monitoring, it's alarms, it is connectivity, it is basically creating one system that ensures that when something doesn't work properly, we get alarmed and we can respond to avoid certain things like boil orders or backups or things like that. But this is not physical improvements to pipes, wells, pumps, anything. So, you know, just to be clear, right, this helps us manage those things.
Okay.
Yet we still need to invest in those things annually through maintenance, through new wells. We'll talk about the DNR sanitary survey. But when you think of the struggles with infrastructure in the community, this is a deeper and more like holistic view of our challenges, and we have three staff members here, Katie, Dave, and Brayden, who manage this every day and deal with this every day and have, you know, essentially put it together so they can hopefully sleep at night, right? And it's not just an investment for our staff. This is a bigger investment in the infrastructure so we can build upon it moving forward because currently we have one system in wastewater and one system in water that don't communicate, right? They don't, they're different systems. And we have a new facility in the DPW garage that will house, and we, so we have to make some improvements and move things over. But this is sort of, you know, an investment in managing versus an investment in the physical infrastructure, and that's a lot of money. And it certainly is frustrating that we have gotten to this point. And moving forward, as we invest in projects and we do things, SCADA will be a component of it. So you're constantly improving it because that's how it's done. Right now, we can't build off of the system we have. It is at the point where it is end of life. So we are rebuilding and then needing to continue to improve it because, as Scott and I talked, it's, and we've asked, you know, what, what does this look like moving forward? Well, you know, you're buying it today and you got to update it. We can't even update it. We can't do the security patch anymore. We can't get the computer operating system anymore on our current system. So, sorry, that's a long answer.
No, that's a good answer, yeah.
But it's where we are at, in the reality we're facing.
To shorten his answer quite a bit, it's not the hardware of the pumps, the lift station, so on, it's the control system and monitoring system for those equipments.
Right, and it will monitor if something is, say, pumping at 50% of what it should, it'll alarm the water department or whatever, and they can go check it, fix it, whatever. So it is like a security system also for failing pieces of equipment.
If you recall, a couple, a few Decembers ago, we had a boil order, and it was because Dave, Dave was one of probably his worst nightmare days, right? Got to work, and there was no pressure on one side of town, realized that the Byers Street Tower had basically, and what happened was is the pump in one of the wells failed to turn on, correct Dave?
What happened was, we actually had an alarm system. Do you want him to come up?
If he wants to.
But it was basically old technology, based with our alarm system, did not notify us that three wells were not told to turn on the prior day. It just so happened that about 6:15, 6:30 in the morning, right before we all arrived at work, half the city didn't have water. So we got that cleared up, but we still had a boil water order, and it was mainly because of the SCADA system.
I have questions about financing.
I have questions about financing. Because this runs over two fiscal years, have we accommodated for this funding in this budget and anticipating it in the next?
We have put this as a placeholder in the last two or three budgets, including $750,000 in the 2026 capital budget financed through essentially water and sewer rates.
You answered my, my second question, which was if, if it was going to be considered a capital improvement and you've already bookmarked the money for it. So I would like to make a motion that we accept the bid from PJ Cortens and Company in the amount of $1,086,800.
I'll second it.
A motion by Alan, seconded by Doug.
Like three, three questions? So first to Dave, I guess first, like I understand it and I think it's a good idea. But I guess in Dave's example is, does the system prevent that from happening or does it just give an early notification that it happened? So I think that's important to know.
So currently, we wouldn't, what exactly happens, we would not get an alarm.
But with the new system, would you get the alarm?
Correct.
But it's still would have failed?
So currently, if the same thing happened, we would still have that failure. We wouldn't lose the towers as we did because we put some, some security into, basically if the towers hit a certain pressure now, the two, two of the wells work independently and recognize the pressure is too low and they kick out. We didn't have that before, but we still have the same problem because the SCADA is the same SCADA that we had the problem with. So it's basically a one-shot thing. Towers said wells come on, the wells were down because they were actually being worked on at the time. And when the system came back up, because it was a one-shot, not a constant, which would be basically the new SCADA, that shot that the towers told them to come on was already gone. So they just remained off.
Okay. Second question, I guess I would like to see what the, like I have the cost of what it is here, right? A little north of a million. If we don't do it, what that cost is, right? There is a cost to not doing it for labor and for parts, right? And whatever we had in 2024, right? You know, I don't know, a hundred thousand in labor for you guys and 75,000 in parts off of eBay, right? But to actually have that actually gives like the idea of what the choice is between the two, right? Because right now it's just one million or something.
But the issue with the, the second scenario where we're trying to find parts is we're trying to find parts that don't exist anymore.
Sure.
So you're hoping someone just decommissioned the system with the part you need.
So, which would be my comment here in that in my, in this, unless this industry is different, which I'm not fully versed in every industry. In my experience with things moving to newer chipsets, which I'm assuming is going to be in here, right? COM boards or I/O boards or whatever sensors we're putting in. There's like, as technology has advanced, the actual longevity of parts has also decreased in my industries that I've been in, right? So when we put in I/O boards and stuff to connect to Modbus, right? The communication protocol, all the chip suppliers had like, basically like a 10-year life that they would build chips for. And then at the end of that 10 years, today, we're still in that scramble of reaching out to third parties to try to get other chips to actually fit in when we needed to retrofit. So I guess my assumption is this industry is similar, but I don't, I don't know that. But I guess I'm seeing us still staying, staying here in like 10 years from now with the new system and it's not as simple as going to the original supplier and getting replacement parts, right? We're going to have to move potentially to third-party sourcing or still finding used parts. Is that not accurate? Because that's, you know, in remote enunciators, which I was familiar with in the generator world, it's like, that's what it was, right? Your remote enunciator on a building is about 10 years. And if it broke at that 10 years, you were having to find something else, third-party to make it work.
I think you can unpack multiple things that puts SCADA together, but a lot of, a lot of what we're putting SCADA together with is components. So if that component's bad, you have to replace that component. And I think that's what, that's what you're trying to say is, is what's the life cycle of the new components? It, it's hard to tell you what the future is, but right now you're running serial and not even Modbus per se. And we're going to take you all, we're going to take you to Ethernet, I mean, that's, and wireless. And that, I mean, that's the best technology we have at this point. The whole chip thing, I don't see guys going in and actually replacing chips. It's more, more as holistically, if we need a new flow meter or a new device or a new RTD, they buy that and replace that and wire it into the I/O of PLC.
So people today that have SCADA that went in 10 years ago, are they able to plug and play with everything or are they having to upgrade from 10 years, right? Whatever it was 10 years ago, say it was RS232 or something and now everything has moved to Ethernet. So if we're saying that this fixes all our problems today, in 10 years, if we're at Ethernet, do we all have to have the same conversation because we're going to have to go to something else to make everything?
And should that not be just considered part of ongoing maintenance?
That's the thing is SCADA, like SCADA is so many different things. You're talking about the components of the hardware that are physically at the sites and that's what's kind of creating that back, that backup that Dave was talking about. When SCADA wasn't there and somehow the comms didn't tell it to turn on, those local controls would take over and make the well start. So those components, most likely they'd be, they're going to plug and play because of their I/O and they're not necessarily locally going to be Ethernet. But how we communicate between the sites, right now that's Ethernet. I mean, that's, that's, that's how the, how the world's going. If that changes, I'm not sure what the next, the next communication's going to be, you know? I can't promise you that it won't be, but I will tell you that people that installed a SCADA system 10 years ago, they're not at complete legacy with their PLCs yet. So we try to specify Allen Bradley and some people like Allen Bradley, some don't, but Allen Bradley has a track record in the Midwest of not only having support, but also having supply. And they also support their product as long as just about anybody in the industry. I mean, for years, we would only specify Allen Bradley or Cutler Hammer devices because those companies are still around. So often I go into communities like this and I walk in and, I mean, that community is, or that, that company has been gone for years and years and years. And that's where I think this legacy kind of, it's a nice way of saying a dirty word, but you walk in and it's like, they're not even existence anymore. No wonder, no one's supporting it. So trying to hedge against what you're asking by buying quality parts from, from companies that we believe are going to be around in 10 years, your chances are very, very good because that, over my 30 years, I have never seen Allen Bradley not support. Now, they, they may discontinue and that's what I think you guys are right. You're on the cusp of the first part, my 30 years of seeing product actually be discontinued, actually make it to full legacy and graduate. So the products we're putting in now, I believe will be supported out to at least that 10-year point and probably beyond.
And I'll just add that since 2022, we have spent $10323.05 on repairs and maintenance to the SCADA system.
Is that parts and labor?
That's PJ Cortens, that is parts and labor to keep it operating. So while obviously not a million dollars, the other side of this is just the security and IT concerns that have been brought forward and the fact that we're running on operating systems that are not being patched and secure. So we've had to isolate things, but generally, you know, we are a few components away from, you know, having a system failure that, and then there's cybersecurity concerns. There's certainly concerns about water safety and how people can get into a system. And I would just say we are not in a position to have technology that can respond well to that currently. And certainly the staff here can talk about how often they're dealing with this issue and what we've had to do to ensure that, you know, there's a response in the event that there is a failure because we do still get failures and there are false alarms. And there are issues that certainly, you know, monthly come up. So it's, it's at that unreliable point. And frankly, the two systems not talking to each other, they're just not compatible. So bringing some efficiency to compatibility and making sure that the entire system speaks to each other and can respond was another main reason toward this. So, you know, what can we expect moving forward in terms of a cost? Yeah, we can continue to plug 25, 30-plus thousand dollars a year into the system. Alternatively, we may be forced into doing this more reactively than proactively. And the idea that it goes out of date? Yes, right? Everything, but the idea that I explained earlier was that when we do a project like a well, we are adding SCADA into that component to make sure that we are updating it along the way. So we're not here doing it at a million-dollar chunks. You're doing it in a $2 million well project and you're adding, say a hundred thousand dollars to update things or make sure that it speaks or continues to operate effectively. That's how it's done. When we haven't done a project, invest in infrastructure like wells or treatment facilities. When we haven't done the bigger project, we also haven't done the updating. So it's been, as we talked with the wastewater treatment plant, the last time we did an upgrade to the treatment plant was 2002. So that's the last time that any real work was done on the SCADA system in the treatment facility, right? So we have never drilled a well. We inherited the SCADA system from Alliant Energy or Wisconsin Power and Light, right? When we bought it. We have not invested in it other than maintenance and making sure that it didn't have a catastrophic
Is that all your questions?
Yep.
Mark, Steve, then Doug and Jolene.
Yeah, just kind of to quickly talk, I think the, the other side of, of, you know, the dollar cost is the liability of having a non-working water utility and sewer wastewater utility, which is, I mean, if one person were to get sick, I mean, we have boil orders for that very reason, for liability, not because we just think it's prudent or that we think we should boil water, but because we want to make sure that all of our citizens are, are safe and healthy and have clean and available water. So yeah, it's, it's a huge chunk, you know, of change right now. But then the liability, if we were to go down for an extended period of time or not be able to find pieces and have to try and retrofit something, that would, that would be huge and that would be a newsworthy, you know, we would be in the news all over for something like that, which would not be good. And I've previously worked with some ethanol plants who use very similar systems to this and always, always, always the plants that say, oh no, our system is running fine, it's been in place, we haven't done any upgrades for, you know, eight, nine, 10 years. They're the ones that when it goes down, the, the plant managers, you know, the, the board of directors are screaming and yelling, why are we, you know, down and, and why is it going to cost us, you know, $2 million, $3 million to replace an entire system versus having kind of a planned lifecycle, as Adam was saying, where, hey, we're going to go and do new pumps. Well, at that same time, let's replace some of the flow meters, let's replace some of the pressure transducers and get those wired in. And then, okay, we need operator stations that need to be replaced or upgraded. So you kind of do it pieces at a time and build that in. And that goes back to something I've said before too, which is, you know, as a city, as representatives on the city for, for the citizens, we also not only are responsible for paying for the capital of projects like this, but we need to plan for the maintenance and, and repair of these systems. And I've said that about the roads, you know, we can't just build a road and let it sit for 50 years. We can't just, you know, implement a SCADA system and let it sit for, for 15 years and just expect it to quietly do its thing without any issues. So I think in the, you know, the coming years, we will all see the, the need and we'll have to put into our budgets moving forward, the, the maintenance for it as well.
Thank you. Steve?
Everybody pretty much covered what I was going to ask, but the most serious thing I have to ask is what kind of security do they have so somebody can't hack into this and shut our water off?
Specifically or? So one of the, one of the greatest security things that's happening right now is by keeping up with your, your software updates, what they're doing is they're watching and they're learning from the hackers, okay? And if you don't do those updates on your, on your, on your computer, that's what's telling your computer, okay, here's where I'm going to close the doors. So that is specifically one of the biggest security things that's being added is by bringing your software up to that level, now you'll have that real-time updates of the security as, as you go. Did I answer your question or did I?
Kind of.
Yeah.
Yeah, like you say, you know.
It's a little bit convoluted and complicated.
Yeah.
And the fact that Microsoft, when they're, they're giving you those free updates, what they're doing is part of what they're doing is they're, they're, they're putting patches into your software to put extra locks on the windows and the doors, if that makes sense. And if you are at a point where you can't take, your computer's so old that you can't take those updates, you're not getting those locks. And that means that those are tool, those are ways that people are getting into the system. So I think loaded way of answering your question, you're making your system so it keeps up with the security instead of stopping with, I just bought a new door lock at Menards. My, my door is locked. It's actually that, that door lock's being upgraded with, with how sophisticated the criminal is, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Also, you're talking wireless systems, that's why one of the, you know, as far as your security goes, you know, that.
Yep.
It's kind of vulnerable.
Encryption, yeah, but it's all encrypted and whatnot, so.
Okay.
I hit on one thing that was probably the easiest thing for me to describe, but there is encryption on the, on the new radio systems.
Okay. Thank you.
If it's enabled, it works. If it's not enabled, it's, it's, like you said, more vulnerable.
Thank you.
Doug?
I have a question on the bid proposal tabulation. Can we talk about that? Okay. I was noticing some of the fields are kind of ungraded out. Are we doing those now? For instance, line eight and nine, field investigation documentation involve engineering workshop, are those options or are they part of the bid?
Great question, very, very detailed. PJ Cortens basically has confirmed that they have included that work in other line items.
Okay.
So they're honoring the price, they're going to do all the work as described on the bid, bid form, even if it's not there, they've, they've assured us that they're going to do that task.
Okay. I have.
That's, I mean, we could go way, way into it, but that's, that's really the best way to quickly answer your question.
Okay, I have a question on line 19. Those tariff allowances, are we even boarding parts for this?
So anything computerized, any chips, a lot, a lot of that stuff could be impacted by tariffs. So what we did is we put an allowance in there so that the contractor did not include or build in guest, guest numbers for tariffs. If your equipment, let's just say they put a bid together and they said, this level transducer is going to cost a hundred bucks. and they said, this level transducer is going to cost $100. And it didn't have a tariff on it when they put the bid together. They go to buy the transducer and it comes back and it has a $10. And I'm just using round numbers.
Right.
It's going to be $110 and the $10 is tariff. We would pay for that tariff with that allowance. If there are no tariffs that impact the cost, the pricing, then that money will be at the end changed order back and reduce the overall contract value.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Jolene?
Super. I want to go back to the security concerns. And in fact, it was interesting, just on 60 Minutes recently, they revisited a story that I think actually aired a couple of years ago about a city utilities that were under attack by, they thought, China. And so I can see why this is of huge concern. And also, what I thought was alarming was the city, nobody could identify that this city was related to national security more than any other city. It didn't make sense. It wasn't near something of importance seemingly. So I can understand the security concern. If the security concern is, has been identified as such important, I would like to know more or see, hear more from PJ Cortons and Company as to why this company outshines their competitors. I get that they have a relationship and I want to honor that relationship. But tonight, it sounds like it's a little bit less about their familiarity with our system, although that's helpful. But it sounds like moving forward, we could, coming back to security concerns. And so I guess I would like to see something from that company with their record of what they do. How do they keep up with it? I would assume that that would be, and maybe we don't see it because it went to you and you reviewed it. I guess that's what's a little bit hard is that we are taking for granted what you have to say versus us reviewing what that company brought to you as to why they outshine the other bid.
So staff did the proposals. So I guess I'd like to clarify that I didn't do it by myself. They did put the bid package together based on stuff that I put together. So a lot of the security that's built into the equipment and the softwares in the bid are industry-standard stuff that MSA believes is prudent and meets all the regulatory requirements, if that makes sense. So I don't know quite how to unpack exactly what you're looking for.
I mean, I guess it's hard because what you're saying, we have to take the, is this one of the things where we have to take the minimum bid as long as it meets, you know, sort of general standards? I just think in something like this, I wish we could take the company that had the best record on security, if that is the number-one thing. But I guess is what you're saying is this company meets the standards and to what the qualifications are and we have to take this bid. I mean, I guess then that's what it is. I guess I just wish I would see more about their record.
Yeah, I mean, PJ Cortons is a well-established company that we've had a relationship that works throughout the state that is capable of implementing the technology that we've specified. The other proposal was, I believe, significantly higher in cost. And so at the end of the day, you know, when we're looking at it, you know, you're trying to compare apples to apples. And at a base security level, we have put together a spec that would be, you know, sufficient for, they bid the same thing, right? So it comes down to then who's implementing it for less dollars. And the other company was 20, 30% higher? 40%, 50%, 1.5 million-ish?
1.9.
Okay, so significantly higher.
Wow, okay.
So, I mean, it's sort of a non-starter in terms of, do we want to work with a company that's doing similar work for, you know, twice as much?
Okay, and then on that note, since there probably will be, I mean, there obviously will be updates for security. Where am I seeing in this? How long, how long does this relationship? How long are we covered for? For, I understand that there might be, yeah. The agreement as far as updating security concerns, where am I seeing on this for how long this is? Is this for the next 20 years?
It's for the immediate construction. And then updates would be annual after that.
So wouldn't it be helpful to get an estimate of what annual investment would be needed? I mean, I'm sure they have that. If you're saying that they've installed systems and other, what, where is the estimate of annual cost after the immediate building of this contract?
We didn't do that at this point, but we can definitely prepare that for you.
So we don't know if after this immediate construction, we're talking an annual cost of $50,000 or we're talking $5,000. We have no idea is what you're saying.
So it's a, most of your security is going to come off your software. So your software portion of that cost, you're going to have about 20% annual maintenance cost for those updates from the software companies. And we can kind of unpack that. But that, it's really brought on by the software companies chasing that security thing and then moving those patches back. And they have to pay for it somehow, if that makes sense. So it ends up being an annual maintenance cost. So Windows gives you the patch for free, but all those other softwares that you're running and using, they have to sell you or buy those patches from your operating system provider and then update the software.
I get that. So shouldn't we have an estimate of what annual maintenance would be moving forward after the next? So that would be in year three, right? This is covering, if we were to vote on this, the next two years, we are building it? Or is this next two years for the budget?
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't be that hard to move forward. We already budget dollars in our, both of our budgets to manage software, right? To upgrade, to respond to issues. That money is already being budgeted. That's what we're paying, you know, 25, 30 grand a year already. You know, the idea would be to roll that into this system to make sure that we have adequate dollars. I don't know what the annual maintenance cost of software is. You know, those are, you know, things we can look into with PJ Cortons and budget accordingly. But I don't think that any way we go, we're going to avoid, right? Those ongoing maintenance costs. There's no avoiding them. You're stuck. Whether it's software for accounting or software for anything, right? They get you with, oh, it's an update time and here you go, right? So, I mean, that's where, that's part of the long-going, you know, ongoing commitment that we will make to the system. But it's already a commitment we're making.
That makes sense. Okay, so I understand why it's important. And I think in the future, then my last question would be, and I almost would like to hear from sort of department staff. Are we, because, you know, to the point of, I think a colleague brought up earlier, you know, sort of technology, once you invest in this, now we have more expensive, you know, it is, it can go out of date. Maybe it lasts, you know, not as long as what we think because of how technology increases. Isn't it, are we sure that it's not? What is the case made about, what if we invested $1 million in the actual, like, hard infrastructure and bought ourselves some years and then invested in this so that the technology we know? I mean, it a little bit feels like we are, the longer we can stretch this out, the better technology will be available. Again, I'm sold on that we need something like this. But would it be better? What if there's greater needs for actual?
The problem with that approach is our SCADA system currently is on the end of life. It could fail tomorrow. This is going to be a year and a half construction build. It's going to, I'll cross my fingers that our SCADA system will survive that build period. This is something we have to do now.
And you're saying if it fails, it's more than $30,000 versus?
If it fails, the city has no water or the city has no sewer. I do not want to tell the residents of this city, sorry, we're trying to get the best technology two years from now so you're not going to have water for the next six months while we fix something.
I get it, and I get why you're kind of a little bit upset. I mean, last week, we didn't have this and we were in the same situation. I guess my only, it does beg the question of, if we were to invest $1 million in the actual hard infrastructure, look what we could do.
Katie?
Yeah, and I'd like to comment on that. If we were to invest in infrastructure, as you're saying, that infrastructure requires an upgraded SCADA system. So, I mean, anything that you add, extra pumps or new pumps, new whatever, is going to require this new updated SCADA system. We are running on old SCADA, old computers that we can't even update anymore. And everything new requires all of this new software and new equipment. We don't have it. So we really can't. So we're depending on a new SCADA system. And then, as we go, we can do the upgrades to the equipment. And each time we do an upgrade to an equipment, we'll have to, like Adam said, and Scott said, we'll have to update the SCADA system and for each new equipment.
Yeah, that's my point right there.
You can't put the equipment before the SCADA system. You have to put the SCADA system before the equipment.
So, like, we'll talk about the sanitary survey and there's a need for a new well. Obviously, drilling a new well is a pretty big priority for this community in the situation we're in. However, if we drill a new well, the SCADA system we would put into that would not talk to the rest of the system. And we would have to update the rest of the system anyway. So we haven't been updating along the way to have the luxury of just adding onto it. We're rebuilding from the ground so then we can build onto it and invest in the other infrastructure so we're not having things out on islands.
What operating system does the current SCADA system run on? Windows 7. Which was end of life 15 years ago? Thank you. Doug, then Mark.
So I just want to reiterate, we need to, we've been talking about this for, I believe, at least two years. Adam has brought this forward. He says we need it. We've had, I believe, MSA come and talk about this. So I really think this is a non-starter. I think we need to start this yesterday and see it through and build it out as we need to replace parts that go into the system. They will talk to SCADA. The new well will talk to SCADA. I don't think Katie wants to go live at the new well and make sure her cat needs to go to that well and tell everything to turn on and off. I don't think she wants to do that and I don't want her to do that either. So we need to have this so that we can have a functioning city that people can just turn their tap on and have good, clean drinking water. So they flush their toilets. They know that where things are going to go. And if there's a problem, we'll know about it. Thank you.
Mark?
I think we actually talked about most of what I was going to talk about, so.
Good. Any other questions or comments? One more time, or are there any more questions or comments on this topic? So the motion on the floor is to award PJ Cortons and Company the contract for the SCADA improvements at $1,086,800. Could we have roll call vote, please?
Tenkert?
Yes.
Gallops? Here, Gotsky?
Yes.
Iverson?
Here, yes.
Yes.
Johnsoner?
Yes.
Sorensen?
Yes.
Split?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on now to the DNR sanitary survey review. Katie?
You get to hear from me again. Good evening. Tonight, I'll be providing a summary of the City of Ripon Water Utility Response to the 2025 Sanitary Survey Report issued by the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources. The sanitary survey is a comprehensive inspection conducted every three years to evaluate the condition, operation, and management of our public water system. The report identified several significant deficiencies and general deficiencies. And our formal response, written response outlines corrective actions and timelines for each. So significant deficiency number one involves overflow and vent at well eight, ground storage reservoir. A department-approved modification plan for the overflow pipe is already in place. And installation is scheduled for completion this month. The vent modification has also been submitted to the DNR and installation will proceed upon approval. Significant deficiency number two relates to the water main that currently passes through a manhole along West Fond du Lac. And this issue will be addressed as part of the Wisconsin DOT's Highway 23 reconstruction project, which is currently scheduled for 2029. We have requested an extension of the current DNR deadline to align with the project timeline. This was approved on Thursday, October 23rd. Significant deficiency number three requires an installation of a smaller corrosion-resistant screens on our elevated towers, our elevated tower vents. City staff will complete these installations during our 2026 maintenance season. Moving forward, moving on to the general deficiencies, there are two dead-end mains, one on Locust Street and one on Congress Street. Each will have a new flushing or fire hydrant installed by September 2026. A drained inspection, drained inspection of well eight reservoir is scheduled and it will be completed before November 1st. It will likely happen this week. A cross-connection education brochure will be distributed to all customers through utility billing system this winter to meet DNR's public education requirements. And actually, we have it on our website. It's www.cityofrippon.com backslash CCC. So anybody can go look at it right now if you're interested in cross-connections. Our team is also updating all private well permits and records within the city service area. Full documentation will be submitted by June 2026. And lastly, well five and its reservoir are showing significant deterioration. To address this, we have initiated the design of new replacement wells, wells 10 and 11. The DNR granted conditional approval for the well site investigation earlier last week. And the design will continue in coordination with the DNR. Overall, the City of Ripon Utility is in full cooperation with the Wisconsin DNR and is taking proactive steps to correct the deficiencies, modernize our infrastructure and ensure continued delivery of safe, reliable drinking water to our residents. Any questions?
Well, I have a question.
Okay.
That's in our district. So I'm wondering, what's wrong with our district? Is it because the infrastructure is so old that it, or because to have something interfering with laterals in the road tells me that? Am I getting too deep in the?
Well, Dave can help me.
Well, we're talking about Congress and Locust Street. That's our district. So why, what, is it just that it was done older? Or has there been development that the infrastructure isn't supporting?
So when Alliant Energy owned the system, naturally, there's always going to be some places in town where the main dead ends. Most of those have a hydrant or a flushing hydrant that we can flush clean water out of. Locust and Congress, they're right around the corner from each other. They put two dead ends that there's no way to actually flush the water out of. So they're requesting that we install flushing hydrants.
So it's leftover from Alliant when they owned it? Alliant?
Yeah, we have over 45 dead ends.
Okay.
So that will make 47.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just add Katie and her team and Dave and his team. They've done a great job working with the DNR through this. They do this every? Two years, is it?
For three years.
Three years, okay. And at the end of it, there's a general statement of capacity for the system and whether or not the, you know, the city is adequately managing the water utility. And in the 2020 report or 2019 report, it was determined that the city was not managing the water utility adequately. A lot of the investments and infrastructure improvements we've been working on, including the well site, is directly related to these sanitary surveys. There's talks in here about, you know, having cash on hand and finances directly correlated to rate impacts. So the things that we're working on and the things that are coming forward. So the things that we're working on and the things that are coming forward are part of standard DNR oversight and reviews. And, you know, this document, we have presented to you now two times in a row, and we will continue, when it's done, bring it back to the council to ensure that, as required by them, we are sharing with the common council the results of the sanitary survey.
I do, oh, you can go, Jolene.
Okay, she has it first.
All right. So then you said it was every three years. So just a question from my own knowledge, then, not the ones that are deteriorating over time. I get that. But is it a randomized, like, audit from the DNR? And my question is like number two on the significant. If they're doing it every three years, like, that's not a recent problem. How was that not caught three years ago, or six years ago, or nine years ago? Because that water main and the manhole would be next to each other forever, right? So why wasn't, why is that just found now?
Great question. I don't have a good, full answer, but I was part of the last one in 2022. My, the prior lead operator was in 2019. It seems that every year going forward, more regulations come in. There's more questions asked, more, more, so to speak. Okay, we know we overlooked this last time, but now we're going to discuss it. And that's where some of the stuff that's a significant deficiency used to be a deficiency. Now they're saying, look, we talked about it last time. We just can't overlook it this time.
And also new engineers, too.
Yes.
As regulation evolves, are you ever grandfathered in? Or is there some regulation that supersedes everything you did before? And you just?
There's a number of things at the end of the report that talk about certain things are just grandfathered in. Like, they want the wells to be at least 12 inches above the floor. One of them is 10 inches. There's nothing we can really do about that, except for reconstruct the well, which they don't expect us to do. So some of that stuff is just grandfathered in and other things that just get overlooked.
Okay, thanks.
Joel?
Can you go through briefly? There are five recommendations. There's only five. I know that it's, we don't want to go too late here. But what are, for the five recommendations, the quick ways that we plan? Or do you need anything from us to address it? So for example, number five is the potential of cyber attacks. And my guess is what we just voted on for the SCADA system, SCADA system can help with that. And it also talks about utilizing some assessment tools.
Yep.
Is that, I mean, could you go through briefly if there's anything else you need from us? And what the plan is? I mean, are these, do you have what you need to cover these five?
We have what we need. Those are basically just updates to documents and reports that have already been done. We just have to make sure that they are, all the place, all the things are in place still. And so we just have to go through. We have an emergency response plan that's already in place. I'm currently just going through it right now to make sure that all the contacts are updated. We submit it again, and they review it and hopefully okay it. So I don't need anything from you guys for that, actually. The whole response has already been submitted to the DNR and accepted. So there's really nothing. We're just sharing it with you.
When are we planning the emergency operations plan, the tabletop exercise? Or has that already been done?
The tabletop exercise.
That's number four. They recommend that we re-practice our emergency operations plan as a tabletop exercise.
That will, that's part of the emergency plan that is already in place, so.
Do we know when that'll be?
We don't.
The last time we did it, we did it with the county. That was four years ago, I believe. And the county actually came in and said, oh, it's part of the little program.
So is that a current recommendation? So we should set one up again to be in compliance with the recommendation? Is that my understanding?
That'll be part of the plan. When the plan is submitted, that whatever the requirements are, we will have each one of those in place. So if that's, if they're requiring to have a tabletop exercise, we will have to have another tabletop exercise prior to submitting the plan.
So not to, again, I am so grateful for all the work you're doing and the hard work. It's a lot. Did you just say that we already submitted our response?
We submitted the response to all of the deficiencies for the sanitary survey.
And they're waiting then on how we respond with regulations?
Yep, and each, each one has a deadline. And so we will meet each one of those deadlines. That's how we respond.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank Katie.
Thank you. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
And there's no action needed on that?
Nope.
Okay. All right, we'll move on then to summary budget publication and budget hearing resolution. Do we have any updates on the budget before we get into the resolution?
Oh, my goodness. Where is this little mouse going?
There it is.
All right. So in your packets, you have a resolution for summary budget publication and setting the public hearing. So it's a standard thing we do ahead of the first meeting in November, where the city holds its public hearing. So it would be set for November 11th at 7:00. And this also sets the preliminary property tax levy at $4,289,257. So that's the resolution. In your packet, you had an updated budget. So as you can see here from the timeline, we will work toward the 11th and put a summary budget in the paper and post it online. And we'll essentially summarize the budget and notify the public that there is a public hearing on the budget. Pretty standard, so. So within your budget, we have here the previous year's tax levy. So I just have some updated information for you. So the maximum allowed, and we had talked at last meeting and received guidance to add $250,000 of debt increase to the overall tax levy. So the overall maximum allowable without debt is $4,039,000. So you add the $250,000, the summary budget, or what's in the budget, is $4,289,000. So levy increases are calculated by net new construction, tid closures, and then we have the increase. There's our mill rate history. So no debt increase would put the mill rate at 9.13 per thousand. So we have our final assessed value. And the debt increase of $250,000 would move the projected mill rate to $9.70. So that's a 41 cent increase. You can see then the breakdown of where the preliminary property tax distribution would go. So 2.5 million to general fund, $450,000 to the library. And then the biggest change is obviously to the debt service fund, which goes to 1.33 million. So that's the overall tax implication and projected mill rate based on actual assessed value. There are no questions there. The general fund change summary, we provided you a document last meeting as well. The only things to change were a little bit of revenue in the interest income. There was a small increase to legislative or council small equipment of $4,000. There was travel and training expense and administration up 1,200. Contingency to taxi went up 6,000. And then cable TV and media equipment up 2,000. So all of that is in line with the expenditure restraint limit and the amendment we did to the 2025 budget. So we are currently sitting within the expenditure restraint limit based on the amended budget from the last meeting. Just a couple of specific things within the budget. The taxi fund, we recommended that an additional $6,000 be put into the, from the general fund property tax into the taxi fund. And that professional services, we did not decline that amount as much as originally put in the budget. We have worked and talked to Brown Cab. And basically, through vacations, not filling hours, through the changes we've made in 2025 to the late night hours, we have slowly moved the amount of hours being purchased down already. And so we are moving from 13,000-ish down to 12,5-ish, down to more like 1170, or 700, sorry, 11,700 hours. So we are making a slow move down, just based on availability of drivers, so on and so forth. So there's a small reduction there. So we will not be calling for additional changes to the taxi service in 2026 until we bid it out again and set different parameters. So, and we are adding more to the tax levy side to better tackle some of that deficit. So that's that. And then capital projects update, everything pretty much carried over from our budget worksheet. The only thing is $700,000 was moved to contingency, contingency line item within the capital project fund to pay for anything from a fire truck to a road project or something that the council decides. So that was moved out of an identified item into a contingency. So that is the only change in the capital project. And next steps are just review the fee schedule, which we'll talk about, and then hold the budget public hearing on November 11th. The budget can change up until that night. And we're happy to answer any specific questions regarding the summary budget or the budget presented in the packet.
Jolene?
Can you remind, just real quick, that contingency you said was moved out of what line item?
It was to move the identified acquisition of a fire truck and equipment to a contingency line item to provide the council flexibility in the decision on that item.
Got it.
I wanted to note, and kudos to the administration for the increase in transportation aid. And that is because we are doing more road work, and that goes up. But that takes leadership from administration, so I wanted to note that and say thank you.
Thank you. Doug?
As we kick in with the registration fee coming up next year, will that then further increase our transportation aid?
It's certainly not going to hurt, right? And with the horizon, the projects on the horizon, including, you know, Houston Street reconstruction. If you recall in our budget workshop, we provided information regarding the calculation the state uses regarding transportation aid and the amount of average spend the city has increased by millions of dollars over the last few years. Ultimately, I wouldn't say that we are going to see a sharp decline and/or we will see an increase, depending on how the state continues to fund that. But generally speaking, the more you spend on road projects and in transportation-related things, which we have done, the more you get in transportation aid. Regarding the vehicle registration fee in the road projects, there is just a budget line item in here projecting revenue. And we will work toward bringing forward a plan into 2020, or at the end of 2025 here, into 2026, prioritizing projects and setting criteria for road projects to add on to essentially doing the Houston Street project, which is in the capital plan. So overall, you know, we envision spending more money annually on road maintenance moving forward. And that includes other things within the general fund, whether it be, you know, increased dollars in everything from patching to, you know, crack filling and any other related transportation expenses. So we're maintaining or increasing that spending as well in the general fund budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You need a motion, don't you?
We do need a motion on the resolution.
I move we accept resolution to summary budget publication and the budget hearing resolution for November 11th. Do you want the date?
That's fine.
November 11th, 2025, at 7:00 PM.
I'll second it.
A motion by Ellen, second by Doug. Any discussion on the motion? The motion is to approve the resolution for summary budget publication and budget hearing. Go ahead.
It's just a general question, maybe for Naomi, that I was going to wait till the end. But because I see it here, so on the agenda, you know, I think this is a new layout to show attachments. And they both, they're both identical. They both say one. Is, why, why do both of these items, what is this new layout? What is the purpose of the summary budget publication and budget hearing resolution one? And then underneath it, it says the exact same thing.
So it's just the way I uploaded the document, and it's a new layout within the system we have to manage meetings. We're working through it, but it's not perfect, you know? So, but it frankly is more accessible online than it is in paper form, and that's the point.
Oh, so this is kind of a print, so these are live links?
So yes, somebody would download the packet or the agenda, look at it.
Okay, cool.
And they can just live, right into each attachment one by one.
That didn't work for me. I was trying to download them.
We have the full downloaded, too. But yeah, there's different, so we're working through it. So it'll, we'll try to make it more clear.
So the numbers make more sense for like the upload. It doesn't really pertain to anything when we are here. Okay, got it.
Means nothing. It's just the upload.
Any further questions or discussion? So the motion is to approve the summary budget publication and budget hearing resolution. We have roll call, please.
Denkert?
Yes.
Gotsky?
Yes.
Iverson?
Yes.
Premer?
Yes.
Schotzinger?
Yes.
Sorenson?
Yes.
Split?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Yo. I just will make a note to the people at home. Just because the hearing is set for November 11th does not mean you can't bring stuff forward to your council members or to the administration ahead of time. All right, moving on then to the 2026 fee schedule review. Adam?
I put a summary, is this just a review before we bring it forward to you to see if you want to make any changes? Again, you can make changes up until the 11th, when we have the formal resolution. But these are the proposed 2026 user fees or charges for services. So we look at the fee structure annually, feed this into the budget as well as look at what things are costing us to manage certain permits or certain programs or, you know, just general revenues. Ultimately, there are the ones that have been increased that are highlighted in the highlighted 2026 changes, including special administration or special assessment administration. So the statement of real property or a special assessment letter fee, we would increase. Hotel and tourist rooming house licenses would increase to align with other business license fees. The recycling fee would increase due to the escalating cost of the contract, which we've talked about. Cemetery fees would be the first adjustment since 2022 to address rising maintenance and internment costs. So we've, Allen's looked through that, and we haven't raised anything for, like you said, three, four years. So there's a proposed little bit of increase there. EMS fees, we're adding two new service fees for specialized response and supplies. So a cost recovery focus and updated relate, and just updating the fee schedule otherwise, just language-wise. But generally, it's freezing all of the EMS fees. Taxi, the only increase would be agency fare. We talked to Brown Cab about that. That's, that's not a fare we have to do a public hearing for. It's not a general fare. It's a, it's a agency fare from certain agencies that use it within the community, and that should net approximately $10,000 in additional revenue to the taxi utility fees, just routine updates from the PSC. So we have, we don't necessarily control water rates. The PSC controls water rates. And so we will be implementing any PSC-approved water rates. But then the big thing is the sewer and the sewer, sanitary sewer, sorry, I have a typo here, but sanitary sewer adjustment. here, but sanitary sewer adjustment will be reflected that we had previously discussed in the industrial rates. So all of those rates that were discussed a couple months, about a month ago in the industrial category have been updated, but there's no other planned rate increases. And then just two small, or a few small miscellaneous permit fees for selected miscellaneous permits and building permits, but generally a freeze as well in building permits. So just minor changes all around, but keeping up with some of the costs related to providing the service and/or required inflationary or other contracted fee requirements.
Any questions regarding fees?
Does this make accommodation for the businesses that would be, is there like a standardization in here somehow for businesses that would be discharging polluted water into our system?
In terms of sewer rates?
Yeah.
It moves all class B users to the, to the new scale that we proposed in the presentation. So you can see the category B users for, you know, BOD, total spend of solids, phosphorus, nitrogen, sodium, or chlorine, sorry, chlorides, sorry, pH, zinc, copper, all of those are added in.
Terrific.
So that is directly related to the category B users and has everything we discussed about a month and a half ago, month ago, two months ago.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
We'll move on to a resolution next month.
All right, moving on then to the Ripon First Housing Program Fund request.
I just have a brief summary here. So in 2023, we established the Ripon First Housing Program to encourage first-time home buyers to buy homes within Ripon to assist with the affordability gap identified in our housing studies. We originally allocated fifteen thousand dollars to that fund through the TID Housing Extension Fund. We have expended those dollars and there remains interest in the program. So I am requesting that we fund additional fifteen thousand dollars from the TID Housing Extension Fund. That would still leave us with nearly six hundred thousand dollars of available resource in the Housing Extension Fund. And it has honestly been a very simple but effective program. And, you know, I put in a testimonial about someone who was able to essentially close and buy a house for the first time, a young family in Ripon, and this resource, the five thousand dollars, helped tremendously. So certainly the program is attached. We have it all, it's easy to run, we have it all, it's, it's already there. It's just asking for an additional fifteen thousand dollars to help fund future applications.
I move that we move the fifteen thousand dollars from the TID Housing Extension Fund to continue the Ripon First Housing Program.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mark, second by Jolene. If there is no discussion, the motion is to move fifteen thousand dollars from the TID housing closing, or TID closure housing fund to the Ripon First Housing Program Fund. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That is approved. All right, we're gonna move on to a presentation and discussion on e-bikes and e-scooters.
Bill?
Well, you certainly have covered a variety of topics tonight. Now in the, now for something completely different category. So obviously, in the last couple meetings, you had asked for some information in reference to scooters, bikes, play vehicles that some, I think some council people have got some concerns from citizens, so wanted to just talk to you a little bit about that tonight and just kind of lay a foundation here and some, some ideas and some things moving forward. So, so just a little bit of foundation. So as we talk about this, we want to give you some foundational experience here. Recognize that as we talk about scooters, bikes, and play vehicles, Wisconsin statutes categorize those in different ways. And it's important when we talk about those that we have a little bit of an understanding of their definitions, because the statutes dictate where enforcement is applicable, where this piece of equipment can be used, those type of things. So definitions become very important when we talk about this discussion, okay? And a lot of times, these definitions to the average person can get somewhat confusing. So we'll try to make this very painless here and kind of give you some, some ideas and some conversation. So let's talk about play vehicles initially. So the state statutes regulate and define what a play vehicle is. So you'll see a play vehicle by definition, state statute are those things like coasters, skateboards, roller skates, those things that are contained within there, within that definition. Those items in which a person can ride, the, the big part of this definition or this statute is that play vehicles are not authorized to be operated in the roadway. So this is where we see a lot of issues when we deal with primarily like skateboards. So in the past, when we've dealt with skateboarding issues, skateboard is considered a play vehicle, cannot be operated in the street, okay? But we look at these definitions, it's also important, not only as we review those with the law, as to what the definition says, but also what's missing from the definition. So you'll notice specifically in this play vehicle definition, scooter is not included in that, okay? So it's completely different categories. So it's important to recognize what's in the definition as well as what's not in the definition, because it may be covered someplace else. Obviously, everybody knows what a bicycle is, right? Well, state defines that for us. State statutes give us that definition. So any vehicle propelled by feet or hands, using pedals or cranks, any two wheels which are not less than fourteen inches, fourteen inches. Now, in contrast to play vehicles, bicycles can be utilized on the roadways. So it falls into a completely different category. We all know from, from our education in the past, and when we learned to ride bikes, that bicyclists must follow the rules of the road, okay? They have to yield to pedestrians, they have to have proper safety equipment on them, such as lighting and reflectors during hours of darkness, those type of things. But those features are inclusive in bicycles because they can be operated on a roadway, okay? So these are all the things that we all grew up riding, right? Regular bicycles. Now we've propelled ourselves into the electric bike arena. This tends to get a little bit confusing. I will tell you that there are basically three different classes of electric bikes, and it generally is dictated by the mile per hour of those pieces of equipment and how fast they can go. So whether it's a class one, class two, or class three electric bike, usually is dictated in, in general definition by miles per hour and what the, what the maximum miles per hour is on that, and then the electric motor that's included with that, okay? So we won't get into that too far, we won't get into that too, too depth, but just understand there's three different classes, and we kind of all have seen those electric bikes and understand that they're being, they're very prominent now. Most people are buying those, and that's what we're, we're tending to see a lot of those in our community. So here we get to the scooters then, okay? So this is the state definition on scooter. A device weighing less than a hundred pounds that has handlebars and electric motor is powered solely by the electric motor and human power and has a maximum speed of not more than twenty miles per hour on a paved level surface when powered solely by the electric motor, okay? There's a lot there when we talk about an electric scooter, okay? But, so, in general definitions, electric scooters are treated the same as bicycles under Wisconsin law.
So they're supposed to be in the road?
Okay, well, they can be. So bicycles can be operated either in the road or on the sidewalk, okay? So they're permitted to operate in both of those areas if they're considered in that same category as a bicycle, okay? They could also be operated in bike lanes, bike paths, anywhere that a bicycle can go, okay? Without any restrictions unless, and we'll talk about that later. So scooters in general have to follow those same rules of the road as bicycles. Yield to the pedestrians, ride in single file, no driver's licenses required. But in general terms, scooters are pretty much treated the same way as a bicycle, okay? Here's where this becomes a little challenging, okay? Remember the definition. We just read that definition, but I've highlighted and read here part of that definition. The maximum speed, according to state statute for a scooter, is not more than twenty miles per hour, all right? So what we are seeing is we are seeing the scooters now that are capable of going thirty-plus miles an hour, all right? I had an officer that had one, one night, sitting on the road, and had a scooter coming towards him, and had him in, I think, thirty-two or thirty-four miles an hour on East Fond du Lac Street, okay? What we're basically seeing is that state statute has not kept up with scooter advancements, if you will, all right? So scooter technology, it sounds kind of silly, but it's outpacing state statute because of what's happening with the speeds that these can reach, okay? So that's where some of the challenges are coming, and that's some of the things that you're probably getting conversations about is visual of seeing these scooters racing down the street at extreme miles per hour, okay? They don't really fit into the state statute of scooter, per se, because they can go so much faster than what the state statute regulates. So if we break it down then, let's just talk a little bit about what's allowed versus what's not allowed, and talk about scooters, okay? So if we treat them the same as bicycles, we know that they're allowed to ride in the street, they need to follow the same rules as the bicycles, okay? Traffic laws, yield to pedestrians, all those things we talked about, stop signs, anything like that. They're also permitted to ride on sidewalks, just like bicycles. There's really no speed restrictions with them. There's really no safety restrictions when it comes to scooters, okay? Because they're not, they're not guided by the same, exact same laws as bicycles.
No helmets?
No helmet restrictions, so lights, helmets, all that stuff is not generated or not covered under the same statute as bicycles for scooters. So what we see basically, a lot of times, is that we see or we get in complaints about activities that may appear to be illegal or disruptive, but they're really not regulated by any statute. That's where the conflict comes in for enforcement, based on where we're at right now in this community, okay? So the complaints that we're seeing and that we're getting, and probably the same things that you're hearing about, are things like violation or disregard for traffic, jetting out into the street, the speed of these things as they're going by, maybe seeing young riders on them going really fast. Operating in the roadway, which we've already talked about is permissible, but some people, because this whole area is a bit confusing, and it's new technology really, it's not really regulated or illegal to operate in the roadway. We're seeing things like double riders, so you may have one scooter with two people on it, riding together, those type of things. One thing I will bring up here, and a lot of times when we tend to have these complaints or conversations start happening, it's, well, these kids, these kids. What we're seeing, we have all ages operating in these scooters. So it basically has enabled not only kids to achieve bigger transportation issues, getting from one side of town to the other, like that, but, but adults as well. So we're seeing a lot of adults that are using these, and they're, and they're going fast, and they're engaged in the same type of activity. So it's not just a kid issue, we're seeing adults involved with this as well. So we're probably getting, the things that, the conversations you're probably getting from your constituents, probably, I'm guessing, are along these lines of concerns that, that we're talking about here, okay? So what do we want to do? How do we want to approach this going forward? What are some conversations we need to have? Here's what I think our team would suggest at this point. What we would suggest is kind of a short-term and long-term strategy here. This is not something that we can just go out and affect on our own. So we've always been very open to team concepts, to community approaches when it comes to problem-solving in this community with our department. So by getting those other entities, those other stakeholders in the community, not only law enforcement, but the schools, Boys and Girls Club, social media, parents involved in some of these decisions, maybe the Health Department when it comes to safety, concerns with helmet usage, those type of things, getting a team approach involved here, okay? So short-term, I think one of the things that I would like to see as we go forward here and talk about in some of the suggestions that we've talked about internally, is starting out with the safety information, leading with that, you know, using our social media platforms, flyer distribution through some of our partners, you know, getting that information out as to, these are the things we're seeing, this is some safety things that you can have, parents, these are some of the conversations you should be having with your kids about scooter usage, those type of things. Maybe even encouraging a positive enforcement program or a positive encounters program. You know, we used to do it back in the day with, you saw a kid riding a bike and they had the helmet on, pull over and say, hey, thanks for wearing your helmet, here, go and get yourself a free ice cream phone from McDonald's or Cofer's. Those partners in the community have been really good with us as far as donating those type of things to us, so making that effort to do that with our officers and those contacts. It creates really that, that educational effort rather than the enforcement effort right away to hammer that, you know? You know, let's face it, to go out and write a kid for a ticket for doing some type of violation, and the parents end up paying that anyways, yeah, there's some, there's some incentive there, but really, what are we driving home, okay? So let's work better, let's, let's have a better problem-solving approach than just going out and writing tickets. However, long-term, if this doesn't solve this problem, we do have another option here. The long-term ideal or the long-term thing that we may want to consider that you should think about as we go forward is we could do an ordinance in regards to restrictions on operation of these issues. So as you think about that, there's some things that you need to consider when you think about enacting an ordinance in regards to any type of scooter issue, if you will, okay? So governmental body can create an ordinance in regards to enforcement of this, or do some regulation in regards to use of these pieces of equipment, okay? You can restrict use on locations, you could restrict use on riding on the roadway if you want, in bicycle lanes, you, you know, observation of traffic regulations and speed limits, carrying of passengers, equipment at night, those type of things. You can do that. This governmental body has the ability to do that and enact that in an ordinance if you ever, if we get to that point. Some of the things that you're gonna want to ask approaching that and making that decision and guiding that ordinance is, you know, for example, if we restrict the use in location, so right now we have a restriction on bicycles in the downtown area. Bicycles are not allowed on the sidewalks in the downtown, okay? So let's say we want- So let's say we want to do that same thing with scooters, okay? Where are the scooters going to go now?
Into the roadway, okay?
So now you have to weigh that. Do you want them in the roadway downtown? Do you want them on the sidewalk or do you not then want them in the downtown at all? So these are all conversations that would have to be discussed and thought about before you just rush into an ordinance because there's a lot of consideration here for that, okay? Are our residential areas going to be treated differently than our downtown areas or our business areas when it comes to use of these pieces of equipment, okay? So those are all things that we need to think about, you know? Are we pushing to regulate or create enforcement when that might not be appropriate would be the question that you probably would want to answer here, okay? So I think our short-term solution is that educational enforcement part with our partners in the community, and then if we get to that point, starting to have conversations if we need to go here.
It's, there we go.
So if you start thinking that maybe the ordinance option is something you want to consider, start having those conversations with myself or other city staff, really about the issues, what are you receiving complaints about, okay? What's the specific enforcement issue that we need to address? And if we can do that through the educational component, maybe we don't have to go this route, okay? Analyze those concerns, take a look at them and see what we can do, all right? If you do want to just review an ordinance really quick in your leisure, if you will, if you've got nothing better to do than review a scooter ordinance, Green Bay has a really good one. I reviewed a bunch of them as we were researching this information. There are some communities, I'll just throw it out there, I was not a fan of like City of Fond du Lac's. So some of those, if you're going on and you're researching them, so for example, some communities, they have the scooters that they have in their downtowns that they, you can swipe a card and you can rent them and go around. So some of the ordinance are more geared toward those type of controls of those scooters, you know, parking them and where you can leave them and those type of things. So just be aware of that if you go on and look at anything.
Has those, electric bikes?
Fond du Lac, Madison, Green Bay has them. But Green Bay has a very nice ordinance. I really like how theirs is laid out and the things that it does talk about. You know, some of the things going forward that you've got to think about, you know, earlier tonight I did hear a couple of times that the reconstruction of West Fond du Lac Street is going to be coming. There's some talk about bike lanes in that, in that construction. Are you going to want scooters in the bike lanes on West Fond du Lac Street or do you want that just for bikes or do you, you know? So those are all things that you would have to consider and we'd have to have discussions about before we rush into an ordinance. The only other thing I'll mention here is that we are not the only community dealing with this right now. There's lots of conversations happening about this because again, to go back to that phrase, the state statute has not kept up with scooter technology. So maybe we'll see something happen down the road on a state level as far as addressing the statute, but we are not the only community, even in our area, that are dealing with these issues or these concerns right now. I will tell you that in the last, just in our conversations over the last week or so within the department, we've seen a rapid decline in scooter use since the cold weather came on. So this, over the summertime was, we were seeing a lot of this and getting a lot of complaints, but just in the last week and a half or so when the cold weather came, we saw it really dipped down. So this would be a good opportunity then over the winter for us to get those partners in line, get our stuff together on our educational component and start that in the spring when the warm weather starts coming back, okay? Helmet use, safety restrictions, parent involvement in our other partners, okay? So that's kind of where we're at. That kind of gives you a foundation on a summary of things that are happening with this topic because it's kind of a hot topic, not only here, but in lots of communities in our area, so. Questions?
Yeah, Steve, Doug, Ben, Pauline.
The police department does a wonderful job with their bike rodeo every year. Yeah, is there a possibility of having, for the younger kids and stuff, a scooter rodeo or something or combining that?
Sure, that can be incorporated in it. We just actually, I just had a meeting, our police chaplain, Paul Ethington, does a fantastic job of organizing that. So we just had a meeting on that within the last couple of weeks and we're putting together a new board to help manage that because it's grown quite a bit over the last several years. So that's certainly something we could bring up and incorporate that into it. We do give away helmets and stuff at those events. We also give incentives when they show up with helmets on, so we do helmet fittings and that kind of safety stuff as well, but that's a good point.
So you think that scooters and, or electric scooters and bikes can coexist or the faster scooters maybe not?
Like, coexist?
So like on a bike lane, do you think the two of them can get along?
I, I don't know. Yeah, I have no idea.
If you're riding your bike around 15 miles an hour, here comes a scooter at 20, that might be a problem, or if it's a faster scooter at 25, how are they, how do they know how fast they're going? You know, the faster scooter, how do they know they're?
Yeah, I don't know.
A lot of the electric scooters have an actual speedometer on them.
Also, they would know. But there's no enforcement mechanism to write them a ticket or anything, is it? But they're violating the state statute on 20 miles an hour?
25 miles an hour, probably.
Yeah. Okay, that's just a question that we have to answer then.
Yeah, if we get to that point.
Maybe they're waiting to put their snow tires on.
Right.
So I, first of all, I think, thank you for this great information and I've always appreciated you as a chief saying, how can I work with community partners? How can I provide education? I think that's why you're a phenomenal asset to this community.
Thank you.
I like what you propose and I think that that's great that we take some time to look and hopefully we have some time until spring, unless they put their chains on or something on the tires. Regarding, I'm thinking about the observation of traffic regulations and speed limits. If I were to look at all of the things that a person could do, that seems like a pretty, in my limited opinion, you know, sort of non-controversial or common sense that if the speed limit is 25, there's a, like, and if that's what bikes have to abide by, why are we not making scooters abide by that? Or even what we're seeing is without this currently in place of just saying, let's have just a bare minimum ordinance to abide by traffic really, that means that they could speed through a stop sign and there's nothing we could do, even just having them stop. Is that correct?
So I think that we could probably enforce that based on the fact that they are currently under the bicycle law, okay? So they're enforced primarily like a bicycle is right now, with some exceptions and some caveats there. So blowing through a stop sign on a scooter, I think that would be an interesting court case and an opportunity to make some case law maybe. Those are generally defined when, so for example, the Green Bay ordinance has specifically an ordinance, you must abide by all state traffic codes, okay? So then the violation is under the ordinance, not a separate bicycle violation. So if a bicyclist blows through a stop sign, that's a violation. You can write them a citation for that or you can stop them. That enforcement is strictly upon that bicyclist, they have to abide by that. There's a separate code within the statutes that is specifically for bicycles. My belief is that scooters would fall under that same category, these scooters.
Would you like us to put that in an ordinance, just that bare minimum, to make sure that we're all on the same page or we're saying right now it's?
I think we need to wait.
Okay.
I think we need to wait as far as an enforce, or as far as an ordinance. Let's do the other things, let's try to get a control on that, try to get some education on it, see how it goes, and if we need to get to that point, then we can do that.
But if you're a parent, I guess, listening, saying that right now, we sort of have this agreement that you should follow stop signs, traffic flow, et cetera.
Yeah, and that's really the underlying issue here is that, you know, I had a parent contact one of my officers and they said, well, we just bought our kid, our child, I'm sorry, a scooter that goes 30 miles an hour and we think you guys should have a helmet law in place in this town. Well, if you think your kid should wear a helmet, then tell your kid to wear a helmet. Why should we have an ordinance to now dictate to every, to do that? Tell your kid to wear a helmet and if he doesn't wear a helmet, take a scooter away. Why are you coming to us after you bought the kid a 30 mile an hour scooter and telling us that now we need to enforce or now we need to put in a helmet law? That's where I have an issue. Some of this stuff that we're seeing is a parental guidance issue. So when we're, and we're going to have conversations with our officer, if we're seeing these violations as part of this going forward, not only are they going to make contact with that child or that person, but they're also going to follow up if it's a juvenile with the parents and say, this is what we saw. You need to be aware of this. You need to be the enforcement arm here, not us, okay? We do enough of that in our society now that where that should be more parental responsibility is my belief.
Mark?
I just had one quick comment for the positive encounters program. I wholeheartedly support that, think we should continue that and not only do helmets, but proper lighting and proper signaling and yielding anytime for a bicyclist, for, you know, a scooter rider or even just motorists maybe is a little bit, motor vehicles are maybe a little bit different, but you know, especially we see pedestrians in crosswalks and failure to signal turns and everything and I just think it's, that's one of the, from someone who drives and rides bicycle and rides motorcycle and is in, you know, the road, walking in all types of transport, just having that visibility and having the understanding and knowing, okay, you're going to go or you're going to go or you're indicating your turn is huge. So yeah, I would strongly support the positive encounters for all of it across the board.
Yeah, and our partners in the community, like I said before, McDonald's, Culvers, those entities have always been really gracious to us and donating those things to us, so. So we'll keep you updated. Hopefully this winter gives us a little reprieve and gets us organized and can do something there, okay?
Thank you.
If you have any questions going forward, certainly reach out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief, before you run away, we're up to project updates and staff reports. Anything for PD?
I don't have anything for you, Adam.
All right, thank you. All right. Naomi?
November 4th is the special election for the Lakeside multi-jurisdictional municipal court judge voting for all boards will take place in the council chambers from 7:00 AM until 8:00 PM.
Thank you. Adam?
I don't have anything.
Wow, all right.
Sean, do you have anything?
All right. All right, moving on, I do have one appointment I'd like to make tonight. This would be for Parks and Rec Committee. Individual's name is Casey Heimstra. Could I get a nomination for Casey Heimstra to be appointed to Parks and Rec?
I'll make a motion to nominate Casey Heimstra to Parks and Rec Committee.
I'll second.
A motion by Jonathan, second by Ellen. Any discussion? None. All those in favor of approving Casey Heimstra for Parks and Rec, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you for that. And that's all I have for tonight. Any future agenda items or comments from council?
I have a great possibility. I read something in the League of Wisconsin municipalities about Bitcoin ATMs on regulating them, and I believe we have one here in the city, and I think that's perhaps something that we should look at, regulating the number of transfers per day. They're increasingly used for elder abuse fraud and things like that. So if, want to read the league article about that and maybe it's something we should talk about. I don't know if we have any problems with that, but I'd rather be kind of on top of it than let it slide by.
Thank you. In that case, at this point, I'd seek a motion to adjourn to closed session under Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c), considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which this governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. This would be for City Administrator Sontag's annual performance evaluation and we will also review the minutes from the closed session from July 28th of this year for accuracy.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion by Ellen, second by Mark. All those in favor of adjourned to closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll adjourn to closed session at 9:23. We'll take a five-minute.